This conference will now be recorded.
Can I have my first part first?
Yes, we're good now.
Okay, tonight, January 19th, council meeting. Additional venue, go to meeting. The phone number is 1-408-650-3123. Access code is 323-691-381. Attention callers, please mute calls unless speaking. I'm going to call together the January 19th people. Please stand and join me for pleasantries.
I plead the latest by America and to the father of which is sent one nation under God in heaven. With every justice law, roll call please.
Councilmember Ballinger.
Here.
Councilmember Crummick.
Here.
Councilmember Swift.
Here.
Mayor Protan Leggero.
Here.
And Mayor Al.
Here, thank you. Should I read where they can watch this stuff as well?
No, you don't need to.
Okay, so we're going to move down to consent calendar?
Correct.
Very good. All right, consent calendar, these down in deep before I start.
If somebody has a computer and a phone on, we're hearing echo back.
We're getting feedback somewhere.
Okay.
Okay, we're good? It's come to my attention by way of our vice mayor that it might be a good idea if there's a reasonable amount of people here this evening to discuss the issue regarding the chickens. We might bump that forward. Anyone have an objection to that? Okay, we don't have an objection. Let's start with that, Tammy.
So before this consent calendar?
Yeah.
So the council would need to have the motion to move item number nine?
Yeah.
In front of the consent calendar?
I will do that now.
Okay, so we have a motion by Swift in a second?
Just a second, all those in favor? All right. It's moved, item number nine will now take place. Now, how do we do this? The format is we have people come and speak. Is it pro versus, I mean, yeah.
No, I mean, I think that, I think that you should give a little better background of why this item has been brought.
Okay, I'll try to do what I know. And what I know is this, we have.
Make sure you're speaking to the microphone so that.
We have two opposing thoughts here on this matter. One gentleman feels that privacy has been approached on. The other individual feels they have a right. So I'm not sure what the solution is going to be, but that's what I know about it. Would any councilman like to add something to that?
Well, yes, I believe that the gist of why this needs to be discussed is because the individual who did feel like their privacy has been approached upon would like to have the council entertain the notion, motion to amend the ordinance that is concerning things like chicken coops. But I believe they have to be over 15 feet away from any side or back. And so, but do I have that correct, Dominique?
Fifteen feet from the property line.
We can, you need to talk.
That's my.
Fifteen feet from the property.
From any property line, right. And so that's going to be the gist of our discussion tonight. Do we want to consider entertaining such a motion or do we not want to entertain considering such a idea?
Staff look into that. Let me ask you this, should we at least entertain some testimony first?
So staff did get some public comment regarding the topic, so I can read those into record.
Okay.
Good evening, I was recently made aware of a proposed ban on chickens in the city of Escalon. As a resident of Escalon, I believe that the keeping of a few chickens by residents is completely in line with rural atmosphere of our community. I do not support a ban on chickens in town. Thank you for your considerations, Valerie Saunders. The next one is by Myra, and I apologize if I pronounce any names wrong, Merrill. We live in a city, before we consider getting three chickens, we check the Escalon code. We have had our girls for almost a year now. They are relatively quiet, except maybe when laying or an egg or clucking around the yard when we let them out. They go to bed at dusk and remain quiet and asleep until sunrise, unlike the dogs in the neighborhood that bark or howl at every noise or whine and cry all day because they are left alone or poop on our lawn when humans are walking them and often unleashed. I can't tell you how many times we've picked up a dog or cat poop from the lawn sidewalk or flower beds. The coop is kept clean regularly and our girls are contained in our backyard, not bothering anyone. I hope the chicken issues can be resolved with consideration that most backyard chicken owners don't have the luxury of the 15 feet from structures. Dear City Council, I'm weighing in on the matter of chicken coops. I do not live in the city of Escalon or the county of San Joaquin, though family does. I do raise standard bred chickens equal to purebred and dogs. I commonly keep around 75 birds, including a third of those being roosters. I wish to submit to you some facts. Chicken droppings are small and dry quickly under normal well-kept circumstances. If they are not kept damp, they dry and have no smell and do not draw flies. In a well-kept, there is a little chance of unusual amount of flies or smells. With around 75 birds, I rarely have maggot issues. And if, when I have it, it is a small area and easily dealt with. The chickens like to eat them and once they know that maggots are there, they'll dig them out and eat them. Hens are no louder than dogs or cats. Hens provide food in both egg form and as table meat. In this economy, in this world, it is more important than ever that people are able to take small steps to care for themselves and their families. Chicken droppings are easily and discreetly composted. Kitchen scraps can go to the hens to be recycled back into the family's diet via eggs. Chickens eat the bugs that bug us and help keep the yard more clear of them, which means less pesticide used to control them. During the pandemic, they are a source of comfort and normalcy for adults and children. Think of 4H and FFA. Caring for them takes your mind away from so many cares and onto them and their calming movements and sounds. This is what some kids are doing at home since they can't go to school and be safe. In this world, we don't have a right, we don't have a right not to be offended. We also, I'm sorry, we don't have the right to push our neighbors around to have things the way we prefer them to at our whim. I understand that some people don't want chickens. They are free to not keep chickens. What they are not free to do is dictate to everyone around them that they cannot keep chickens. That is what, what this amounts to. The law already exists to allow hens. I think it is unfair and obnoxious to try to take that away after people have already gotten chickens and realized how valuable they actually are, especially in a distressed world. People need to learn how to be tolerant neighbors rather than other people's lives and legal hobbies being turned upside down. This is ridiculous. Thank you for your time, Paul Shepherd. Please do not ban chickens or chicken coops. Families should be allowed to keep their pets and be able to provide for themselves with fresh eggs for their families. Harley Camacho. To whom this may concern, this letter is addressing the upcoming issue of banning backyard chickens in the Escalon city limits being presented at this evening's city council meeting. Speaking as a member of the Escalon High School Agriculture Department, I am vehemently opposed to banning backyard chickens. Many of our FFA and agriculture students rely on keeping chickens as part of their supervised agriculture projects and agri-science projects, which are inter-curricular activities. These projects are virtual and teaching our student important skills like work ethic, responsibility, and teach them where our food comes from, just to name a few. As an agriculture instructor, the opportunities to experience and immerse oneself in agriculture is so imperative to raising and educating young people that will continue to advocate for agriculture and keep our small town thriving. To ban backyard chickens not only limits the opportunities available to our students, but limits the opportunities available to our residents. Escalon prides itself in being a farming community that supports agriculture. If we move forward on this ban, we will distance this community further and further from agriculture. Once again, I'm passionately against banning backyard chickens and hope that we can come to a resolution that does not negatively impact our students and our town. Thank you, Isabella Leventini, and again, I apologize if I said the name wrong. To the city of Escalon, this letter is being penned in regards to the issues of backyard poultry in the city of Escalon. It has been brought to my attention by many community members that there is a request to forbid raising poultry within city limits. Although reasons may vary from individual to individual who may support a measure such as this.
No way.
An ordinance.
Excuse me, is there a way that I can, real quick? My name is Raul Roan, I've been a long time, you know, citizen of Escalon.
Oh, hold on just a moment, it's, I'm reading into record letters that the city has received.
I'm just saying characterization, because nobody wants a ban. My parents and I are the ones who put in the, you know, brought the issue originally.
Okay, I understand that, but I have a responsibility, we need to read these letters in as they were presented, and we will listen to other comments from both those that are in the council chambers and those that are on the go to meeting.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that.
Although reasons may vary from individual to individual who may support a measure such as this, I'm deeply concerned that creating an ordinance to prohibit raising poultry in Escalon is a mistake and will have direct impact on the quality of life of our residents. First, you have to ask yourself why our residents raise poultry. The answer is not simply that they like birds, but these birds have a purpose. Backyard poultry has become popular in the past decade, and it is because of their ease of maintenance as well as their practicality of their input versus outputs that folks are keeping on, keeping a couple of birds on hand even in town. According to a 2014 article, Backyard Chickens in the United States, a survey of flock owners by the University of California Davis, 95% of the respondents in their research stated that the major reasons for keeping chickens were as food for home use. Once California's Prop 2 was passed in 2008, cost of poultry production increased, and that cost has been passed on to the consumer. The price of eggs alone has increased by 150%. This is from Associated Press in 2017. Now with COVID-19's impact on the food system, food insecurities in the United States has increased, and backyard poultry are even more popular. This is Chiatt U.S. News and World Report, December of 2020. On the other hand, what are the reasons why residents would want to ban backyard poultry in the city limits? Noise, smell? If those are the reasons, then will dogs and cats be next? And if these are the reasons, then those motivations sound quite selfish, to put it bluntly. We allow much larger pets in the city limits that serve the purpose of just being one's pet. Yet this new poultry banning ordinance would, will deny our residents the opportunity to feed their families in these uncertain times with a couple of chickens. Escalon needs to wake up and look around. Many cities, big ones like Stockton, which is in our county, allows backyard poultry. Just this past September, the Stockton City Council voted unanimously to update the city's laws to allow more urban farming by its residents. Now Stocktonians can have backyard chickens, ducks, and bees. They recognize that the ramifications of the pandemic on food security can be eased by their urban ag ordinance and at the same time are following the models of other cities doing the same. I urge the city to look at this more closely. Do write by your residents who need chickens to lighten the burden of their weekly grocery bill. Look to other cities who have allowed urban agriculture for guidance on how to create a safe set of guidelines for residents to have backyard poultry. Make this decision based on data and research rather than pressure and conjecture. Sincerely regarded Josh Hyatt, President, San Joaquin Junior Show and Auction Council Ag Fest. And also by Ken Van Gorkum of Escalon Feed and Supply, Feed Supply, excuse me. Dear City Council, the idea of limiting backyard chickens to only those who have an area in their yard that is 15 feet away from a structure and a fence is ridiculous. By creating this limitation, you are effectively telling city residents that we cannot have our own source of food during a pandemic. We are a farming town and you are deciding if we have our own means of producing food at our home. If this vote passes, will you then try to say that no one can have gardens in town because it attracts the wrong kinds of bugs? This is not right, and I feel this is an idea from people that have no clue what this town and its people stand for. This sounds like a policy, people, a policy people from the Bay Area would make. Having had neighbors that moved from the Bay Area, they bring their failed policies to our towns and to, and try to change them. This is one such policy I am sure has been brought by someone who does not understand what being self-sufficient means. If this passes, you can expect people to leave this town because once again, the people we voted in to represent us are no longer doing what, that, what, doing that for the majority, but only for those that try to limit free thinking and self-sufficiency. Why not stop charging school taxes when schools are closed? That is more reasonable than trying to remove chickens from people's yards that want them. Sincerely, Matt Stevens. Dear City Council, every backyard in the United States contributed share to a bumper crop of poultry and eggs in 1918. This is a statement in history, and now this is, there is consideration to take this away from Escalon citizens by requiring a certain amount of space between structures. Most lots in Escalon would not be able to accommodate what you are asking for. As a property owner, I'm very upset that this is being considered, as we already have our ordinances regarding the keeping of chickens and during these uncertain times of being in a pandemic, where it is more important than ever to be able to be self-sufficient. I feel this will hinder my rights as a homeowner in Escalon to provide eggs for my family. You may have forgotten the run on the grocery stores as panic set in, and I feel if this passes, this will be one step to further limit what we can grow in our backyards. I believe that this subject may have come up from one disgruntled individual and now a community that was founded on its agriculture may be taking our rights away to have poultry because of one citizen's complaint. I looked Escalon up on Wikipedia, and there it states, Escalon is only growing its agriculture in new ways. But with these new setback requirements being considered, will this still be true? Sometimes forward-thinking is really backwards. Sincerely, Patricia Bearcamp-Stevens. And that is the last one that I have.
Okay, I want to say a couple of things, then I'll open it up. To begin with, there is no ban on the chickens that was ever thought of amongst any of us, so I don't know where that came from. The rumor mill. So whoever started that one, you're wrong. We didn't talk about banning chickens, we had no intention of banning chickens. That's number one. Number two, the other rumor, the gentleman that we're discussing who is opposing the proximity of the chickens is not my best friend. We are not close friends, he is a neighbor. I've talked to him on more than one occasion over the 15 or 20 years he's lived there. That's the second rumor. Now, back to what we're talking about this evening. I don't know what the city has in terms of legal rights to do much about this, I don't know. Have we looked into that, Tammy?
Anyway, guys, legal rights?
Legalities of it. Can I add a couple of questions? A little bit. So, just so I understand, and I think everyone else needs to understand, this is a neighbor dispute. Right? Yep. We're getting no other complaints from other people about chicken coops, about chickens in the backyards or anything like that, right? And we're talking about different ordinances. We're talking about an ordinance 6.08.020 that says you can keep six animals, and there's some limitations on that. Chickens fall under that, roosters, you can't have a rooster. We're not even discussing that ordinance. We're not talking about changing the ordinance, the ordinance isn't before us for any kind of discussion about removing it, editing it, amending it, or anything. Okay, so then it becomes an issue about setbacks. So where is the authority for the setbacks?
So currently, our municipal code does not have any specific regulations on setbacks for chicken coops or animal enclosures. The closest one we have in the municipal code, which the council recently updated about 18 months ago, maybe two years ago now, was that all structures under 120 square feet were not subject to setback requirements. So looking at that municipal code that was recently changed, the chicken coop is less than 120 square feet. It's, it's, it is in the setback requirement. So in that manner, we had updated the code to address stormwater issues to make sure that no water was crossing property lines. In this case, the chicken coop was created with a storm drain that directs the water off into, back onto their property as opposed to crossing the property line. So there is nothing in the code at this time that requires the chicken coop to have a setback.
So that, and that all came about with the shed issue. Can you have a shed?
Correct, yes, there's a lot of them.
There's got to be five feet off the fence or the property line. So, so that's, that is a stretch to get this coop to fall under the setbacks, this particular coop to fall into the setbacks. So there is no authority for us to do anything about. So we would have to take, take it under, take all the input from the community and come up with some ordinance that would control chicken coops in the backyard.
That's.
Where they'd be located in the yard is what.
That's the sole issue here is to have a discussion with the community, particularly because of the social media conversations that were going on, that actually put it out there. People that are affected by this could come in, give feedback to the council, and we can decide if it's such an issue that we actually need to take some action and put a new rule on books. That's, that's the issue tonight. So I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on what this was about.
Correct, and so, yeah, we did receive a request from a neighbor to consider applying some type of setback, and their recommendation was a 15 foot. Maybe it's less than that, maybe it's altered in some way. That's the idea that they've presented at this time. I'm sure if there was something else proposed, maybe it would be able to be more flexible. The issue they're experiencing is, is a public nuisance. It's right next to the fence, the property line that's shared. I mean, in most cases, that would be a civil matter, but they have brought it to our attention because they're claiming it's a, it's a public nuisance. And so it attracts flies, noise, it's right by their bedroom window. And so those are the issues that they're having with it that have, have made them approach the city to try to alleviate.
So what is the typical process to start looking at a new ordinance or to address a nuisance complaint?
So those are two separate items. So if we were to move forward with updating the ordinance, typically, we look at what other cities are doing in terms of chicken coops. If they have specific regulations on. They define it. If anybody else has those type of regulations on the books, and we can take a look at other cities that are in our community that are similar in the agricultural aspect of us, and see what they have and present those. We could also take the existing code that we have now, and if it's as simple as just adding a setback of some size, not, maybe not necessarily 15, and ask that that be changed. So setbacks are.
You said that.
Regulated under Title 17, which is our zoning code. So any amendments that are made to our zoning code would go through both planning commission and council for approval. Regarding the item on the public nuisance, the city receives complaints regarding public nuisances. We investigate every complaint that we do receive. So typically, something related to animals would go through our police department slash animal control, and they would send an officer out to conduct an inspection. And then depending on the officer that's sent out, it's their determination whether a public nuisance exists.
And that's happened.
Why are these, why are the setbacks, why are the setbacks are even a question here? I mean, they're not, they're, they're.
Excuse me.
They're not.
Just a minute, just a minute, please. Give us a moment. If, just a minute, if they asked to be, how do we address that?
Well.
They're not permanent structures.
I will ask for, I will ask for, okay, I got it. Excuse me, when we're ready for some exterior input, we'll let the people know, okay? Right now, we're trying to work through this, so please be patient. Okay, back to this, we're working. So the city has taken the action within its authority to take a look at the issue.
Correct, we have had animal control officers go out to their location and inspect the.
Now, one other question I have, we have never experienced this situation before, have we?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I did a little survey, I walked around a couple people's homes that have chickens. One is right across the street from my house, toward, to the south. And I asked him how his neighbor was dealing with the chickens in his city. And he said, well, we, we told them where they were at, we showed them, and they had no problem with it. I said, okay, good. So I went to the other neighbor down the road, which is west of me, two houses over. I asked them about their chicken pen. He said, well, it's out of here, it's a large lot, so there's, he can put anywhere he wants. There's not, and no one's ever complained, but again, it's a pretty good sized lot, so there's not an issue there. I, I just, I don't know what to think. I mean, it's a situation where you, we're not banning chickens, but we do think privacy is, in my opinion, very important. And I just think we need to understand, we should all get along, and the fact that they may or may not have to move those chickens is not going to take the chickens away from them, but it is going to solve the problem with the neighbor who never had a problem before.
So I think the question is the need to, we have never had an issue like this before, and therefore the need to make a change to the ordinance, when we have existing remedies in place, yet they are nuisance, to be able to, to solve that nuisance problem. What did end up happening? What were the results, what were the findings when PD came in? Was it nuisance?
No, at, at none of the times was there, was there an issue that presented a nuisance.
Okay. What was the claim of the specific nuisance on the claim?
Noise, flies.
Odor.
Odor, and those type of things, and their window being in that proximity to where they felt like they couldn't, they can't open their window because of those items, and then going outside, there're heavy, heavy flies, you know, around the MR, so.
Okay, so do you think we maybe open this up and get some feedback from the people on the phones before we go any further? Or do you want to keep going with this?
I want to have some feedback.
I just have some feedback? All right, we're going to open up some feedback from those on the phones. Identify yourself, please, and who we're talking to. Go ahead.
This is Matt. As far as the setbacks, why, why are we having a setback issue? Most people's homes are 50 feet wide by, you know, and in the backyard, it's only 20 feet deep. So if it's a 15-foot setback to a structure that's not even a, it's not even a permanent structure, it's movable. That's, that's legal. So the 15-foot setback, what, I don't even know why that's even a question. And the fly situation, I mean, dogs, dog poop, that, 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 that tracks flies. And it was a bad fly season this year. It was a bad fly season last year. I, you know, I go to people's houses that don't even have chickens or dogs, and it was a bad fly season. So this year was a bad fly season, last year was a bad fly season. I don't, chickens, you know, they, they do get more flies on poop, but it was a bad season. So we have to put that in factor as well. I don't see why this even made the agenda, being that we have a municipal code in the city that says we can have chickens. You guys. Roosters, I get it, no roosters. It seems to me like it's a, it's a neighborly dispute. Some people like chickens, some people like dogs, some people hate dogs, some people hate chickens. But that's up to those neighbors. And I don't think that the, I mean, I don't, I understand that there was no ban involved with, with this, but to put a new ordinance with, with setbacks and, and you do need to keep up a chicken pen, just like you need to keep up the yard, but it seems very, very elementary to me in making a big deal, like, I don't know. I just don't see changing the code.
Okay.
All right, and next would be Raul.
All right, and next would be Raul Barone, who's requested to speak.
Go ahead, Raul.
Hi, members of the council and the public. My name is Raul Barone. I'm the son of the people who put the issue, you know, about the chickens and involved. My dad, Raul, also, and senior, and my, my mother, Kelly. We've been, you know, they've been residents there for over thirty-five years. And, you know, they've never had an issue with, with neighbors about anything before. And the characterization of a ban is completely, it's not even relevant. We don't care if they, they don't care if they have chickens. The fact of the matter was, is that, you know, one day it was there, one day it wasn't there, the next day it was. And it was, you know, fixed upon, you know, the structure of the house on the side, their structure, but also against the fence that my parents and them, you know, share. And, you know, they've, they've asked them like, "Oh, can you guys move it?" And they basically told my parents, "No, they will not move it," even though, you know, my parents cordially asked them and, you know, have been, you know, trying to take the steps beforehand as neighbors to, you know, get them to move it to a place where they have a lot of room in the back. Their, their back, you know, from fence to fence, not deep but wide, is about seventy feet. So, that's why we thought fifteen feet when we proposed the, you know, the ordinance amendment as a, as a, you know, as a kind of an expectation or, you know, a requisite would be, you know, not over the top in any way so that they could maybe just move it, because they seemed adamant on not moving the chicken coop, even though there are significant flies, it smells. My parents can't even have their dogs in the backyard on that side anymore because, you know, the runoff from the, from the water when they, when they do clean it. And that can cause diseases for our dogs. You know, they have two German Shepherds and Malinois German Shepherds, and they don't want them to get sick either, you know. So, the big thing, the big issue was, we just wanted them to move it to a space where it wasn't going to bother, you know, my parents, and they can enjoy their chickens as much as possible. And, you know, the, the police department, I believe, had gone out about three times, and they did make them take some chickens away because they had too many. But, you know, not everybody knows how many chickens you're supposed to have. I didn't know how many chickens you're supposed to have or could have. I thought that, you know, under the ordinances that exist already, that the possibility of, you know, simply, of simply saying that, you know, it could be a public nuisance that should not be, and it should be odorless at all times and maintained. And, you know, under those conditions, there should be something that are, you know, enforceable. But, I don't know, from what I've heard from the discussion here, it doesn't seem that that is the case, that you guys can enforce anything based off of the ordinance. And so, you know, I proposed one a few months ago in September, and I can read it again because it's pretty short. It's just, I just wanted to make it, you know, very succinct and to the point. But, it was basically, let me find it right here. I said, "In case of any animals that are not dogs or cats, there, there should be a proximity requirement of keeping the shelter area, holding pens or coops or houses of such animals, five yards or fifteen feet from any neighbor's windows or doors to prevent unwanted odors, noises, and not become a public nuisance." You know, and that's, that's really all I wanted added to it so that they could move it, since it seemed like, you know, we don't want it to go anything beyond a neighborly dispute. But, you know, in the act of being good neighbors, you know, we feel that they should be able to move it. And kind of like what Mr. Alves, you know, had brought up, was other neighbors, you know, they usually, when they're going to put something in there like that, they let, they let us know, you know, they let my parents know, "Hey, you know, something, we're going to do this." You know, "Is it, is it okay where we're going to put it? It's not going to bother you." But that wasn't happening. These neighbors just recently moved in a few months ago. And, you know, I, I don't think they, they're really, you know, accustomed to, you know, being neighbors with people in the city, because I, from what I've heard is that they'd be, they're coming from a more rural area, like even, you know, like out in the actual countryside, not around this area in Escalon, but from somewhere else. So, really, the issue was if they can move it. And not that we don't care to them to ban chickens, we don't want chickens banned. I mean, you know, that's always a good thing, you know, like, like all those points that were brought up, like why chickens are good to keep are good reasons. But I feel that, you know, according to the ordinances that are already on the books, I think that there's, there's room for you guys to help us figure out the issue and help us ask the neighbors to cordially move their chickens to a place where I, we know for a fact they have a lot of space in that backyard. And they have just as much space as my parents do. And, like I said, it's about seventy feet to seventy feet wide. And that would go without having to, you know, make an amendment or, you know, an amendment to the ordinance. That's all I really have to say to that effect.
All right. Are there any other people who'd like to speak?
On the phone.
On the phone. Tammy.
I, I haven't gotten any. Is there anybody else on the line with go-to meeting that would like to talk? It doesn't look like it.
Okay.
So, we can go to the audience.
All right. Would anyone like to come up and speak at the point on behalf of what's going on this evening? Yes, you may. Anyone, take your turn, come up and speak. Give your name, your address, and...
We don't have to have...
Don't be interesting, longer, just your name, please.
Mayor Alves and Speaker Council Sean Strowman. I'll proudly tell you my address, two four four five... So, this is kind of uncloaking believable. We used our time talking about this. But, first of all, I'm just, I'm more serious though. I'd like to make a request that if there are any decisions on this matter, that you recuse yourself, Mayor Alves, just because of the relationship that you have with the neighbors?
What, what relationship is that I have? And they're my neighbors, and I have to excuse myself from everybody in this town. They're all my neighbors. We don't have a relationship, we're not good friends. Okay. Okay, so why would I want to do that?
Just, just for the appearance, but...
I don't think it's reasonable.
Okay.
Thank you.
The other item is that something to consider is that the last time I checked, I mean, can you prove that the flies, I guess the basis of a nuisance, the flies, are we certain that the flies actually came from the chickens and not from the dog poop? Because last time I checked, you can't really track the flies. So, I guess every complaint that the Barones are noting, are we certain that the problem is actually coming from the chicken coop? We don't know. And so, you know, their complaints are smell, flies, dogs, dogs go to the red back room, and if the dog run is in close proximity to the chicken coop, we can't prove that the flies are coming from the chickens or from the, the dogs themselves. So, I only ask that. I mean, I, I think this is absolutely crazy. I understand about being a good neighbor, but that's probably where the issue is, and the city doesn't get involved in this issue. That's all I want to say.
Thank you for listening. My name is Sheryl, I'm living in Escalon, by the high school. And I had the pleasure of speaking to you before a few years ago. I just, help me understand. So, again, there was a complaint in accordance to nuisance, it's not a nuisance. So, there's no issue there?
The determination was made by the officer that went out there that there was no nuisance, correct?
Okay. Then I ask, what's the forty tonight? Why is it even here? It's an issue between two neighbors, not seven thousand five hundred residents. So, I would ask that you please consider putting this back to the man's two neighbors, because it will affect quite a few of us. I have him, I've had him two sisters. All of my neighbors, I have three neighbors tonight, said, "You want us to go meet you?" They look, they bring their grandkids over, they come, they all have names. Flies, I don't have flies, I have him. I have two dogs. My dog's giving me butterflies and my friends do. My hands enjoy. My dog in the neighborhood, really true, seven thousand five hundred residents. An issue between two neighbors.
I have a question for you. Where are your chickens located on your property?
Down the side yard between my neighbor's house and mine.
And yours, and what's the setback between the two?
On that particular side, I probably have twenty feet. I have free range and I hold twenty feet.
Okay, thank you.
Could I say something real quick?
No, you'll have to wait, please.
Wait till you know, we'll bring it up.
Okay, that was a long pause, so I thought it was over.
My name is Gabriela. I stand before this meeting to express my opposition to enacting an ordinance that would place restrictions on chickens within city limits. Prior to the change of mayorship, this issue was brought before the council and laid to rest when the Dutras were found to not be in violation of any current ordinance. The pristine condition of the coop and its well-thought-out design and build was also noted, notated by city officials. So, what exactly is the issue at hand? If the issue is the projected nuisances that have been outlined by Mr. Barone, including but not limited to noise, smells, public health concerns, attracting flies and rodents, and cleanliness of coops, the keeping of chickens alone does not cause those nuisances listed above, but rather, they result from improper care and maintenance. A properly shaped ordinance can prevent potential nuisances by establishing clear guidelines for chicken care and maintenance. Education, not sanction, is the key to ensure proper care and reduce the potential for nuisances and cleanliness. If the issue is a distance restriction, then average-sized lots need to be taken into consideration. So, said restriction wouldn't prevent people with smaller lot sizes from being able to keep chickens. If the issue is having chickens, period, well, then it should be noted that Escalon is a rural town and farming community. Upon purchasing my home here, I signed a document that explained I was moving into a county that embraces farming. Mr. Barone has identified that his neighbor diagonal from him also has chickens, yet they're not an issue for him. The neighbor directly across from him has screeching macaws and also do not bother him. And let's not forget about the herd of cows that resides less than a quarter of a mile away from Mr. Barone's residence that I presume also does not bother him. Yet, the stench from their cow dung on hot summer nights can be smelled miles away. There are many benefits to having chickens. They are natural compost makers who love to eat weeds and pesto opossums around the yard. They are too food waste by eating leftovers and table scraps. They provide a high-protein, fresh food source for my family. My children, who love them dearly, have learned to be more responsible by caring for them. They love to check for the eggs, love to fill their water and food as well as put them to sleep at night. More importantly, having chickens brings an increased awareness to children of our relationship to the food cycle, and it's important that our children know where their food comes from. In these difficult times, we should be looking to improve food security and upward economic mobility by taking steps towards building a resilient food economy. In fact, cities and towns across the nation are looking at how they can be more sustainable. Allowing chickens is one step towards that goal of increased sustainability. By, by forming a just and well-thought-out pro-chicken ordinance, Escalon can allow residents the right to keep their chickens while also addressing the concerns of those who oppose. The issue of chicken keeping should not be approached with a, excuse me. The issue of chicken keeping should be approached with a how rather than a yes or no, as a growing list of pro-chicken cities across the nation have shown that it can be done successfully. I urge you to rethink your position on this matter and consider what is best for the greater good of the community and not one disgruntled neighbor. I also have chickens. When I got my chickens, I was battling cancer, and I bought them as kind of a pick-me-up because I was dying. And my husband wanted to make me feel better. They have made a huge impact on my life. I happen to have a property in town that is essentially two lots within one. My coop is about fifty foot by seven and a half foot. It sits directly on the fence line. It is custom-built by myself. I also custom-built the Dutras' coop. The coop is not movable because the prior owners of the home had created a dog run on that side of their home in which the bottom part is already adhered to the ground itself. I use that bottom as the bracing to build this coop. I checked every ordinance for the city as well as the county. Prior to building this, I was very diligent and did my homework. I also made this coop so that if there were to be any sort of fire access or electrical or paramedic access, the home in which the chickens go to sleep at night is very easily moved to one end, giving plenty of space for them to get by. It is not for, there's not four walls on it. It's not a structure. It does not have a roof. It is chicken wire and two-by-fours. I put the drainage on there to prevent any water, because it is on a slope, the roof, from going into the neighbor's yard. I have actually been a mediator between the Dutras and Mr. Barone. We've had several wonderful conversations. And just prior to the holidays, I introduced him to James Dutra, the husband of James, and tried to find some sort of a resolve, since they were found to not be in any violation of an ordinance. And Mr. Barone and James Dutra offered to settle this disagreement by agreeing to put up a seven-foot vinyl fence. And I, Mrs. Dutra can speak to what has happened since that point, but the windows that he discusses are clearly bathroom windows. They're so big. They were home when I built the coop. They never said anything to me, they waited until it was done. And, and since I did my homework, you know, I'm not the homeowner of the home, but as a homeowner here in town, I don't really need to get my neighbor's permission to do something that's well within my right to do. And, and so, that wasn't thought of on, on my part.
My question would be, is why there instead of somewhere else on the property?
Mr. Alves, the, the, the home, the way the home is, is built, there, there are two, you would call five yards. One is not accessible from the front. So, technically, fire department would have to hop the fence to get in. It was more desirable because they had used it previously. The owners passed a dog run. The other side of the house is a thoroughfare, there's a shed over there. And they're putting in a branding pool that's going to consume that entire backyard. So, having any fifteen-foot restrictions is going to put that coop in the middle of the pool. It's not that we didn't want to move the coop. The issue is that it's adhered to the structure that was existing. I can't just pick it up and remove it.
I have a question. How long has that coop been there?
I built it in the end of July, and I was out there building it. Personally disabled, and I worked full-time, so it probably took me a good two weeks of being out there, six, seven, eight hours a day. I built it all by myself. So, they came and went and never once said anything.
All right, you have any more you'd like to add?
Excuse me.
All right, next thing, if anyone would like to speak, please come, give us your name.
Hi, I'm in Shaddix, and I don't, I'm not supporting, I'm not supporting having chickens. I would just ask that you check into a daycare center and their relationship of the backyard with chickens to daycare or, or learning centers that have children, because I believe that there is, that there are some regulations that children cannot be exposed to that. So, I'm just asking staff to check, check that as well as everything else that you're doing to...
Thank you, ma'am, all right. Next, please.
I wanted to bring you back actual pictures of the coop. I don't know if I can pass them around. So I come before you, this is my coop. My name is Jenna Dutra. I live on 5x4, Tannawong, here in Escalon. I come before you to discuss backyard chicken coop setbacks requirements and chickens. We moved to Escalon in January of 2018. Where Julius Thomas Town was a small town field, the agriculture and the community. Raising seven kids, we have the right and choice for our family. We found the right choice for our family. After renting for two years, we decided it was time to put down rents and buy a home. As you can see from the photos that I have given through your review, this is a guiltfully custom-built chicken coop was built when we purchased our home in July of 2020. Prior to us purchasing our home, we have raised hens without any home for six years, including within city limits. We did our due diligence and checked every code and ordinance before construction to make sure that we followed the code and were in compliance. This issue of chicken coops was already put to bed, was put before the council and put to bed. And yet, here we are again. It had come up before in late August, early September. First, it was the issue of hens and how it smelled. For animal control, we had to get rid of four of our hens and we were excited for this. We advised by what they said and donated our chickens to a local farmer. The animal control then came back to view our coop and did a chicken count and gave us compliments on how well and clean our coop is kept. We thought this issue was dropped, but then it became a code issue regarding structures. Then after further review and compliance with allowing the viewing of our coop in person, it was deemed not a structure and we were given the all clear that our coop was perfectly fine. And it was put to bed. Then again, here we are with the change of mayorship, it's up for an issue and discussion again. I've posted this issue on our Escalon residents page on Facebook. Out of the 130 comments on Facebook, only one was negative. So I asked how many have come to this council before and made this an issue? Is this involving our community or one disgruntled neighbor? And considering these new court code regulations, how many people will this affect? Because of the circumstances of our country today, more people are becoming aware of how animals live in suburban areas and how they're turning towards homesteading strategies to provide for themselves and their families. In fact, when we purchased our home, like everyone else in Yawk County, we had a sign of our acknowledging that we live in a farming community. I have it here if you guys wanted. Homesteading is a lifestyle and proficiency. We have seven kids. These eggs are, like, we live on these eggs. I can't even tell you how many eggs we go through in a week. Being able to feed our family farm-fresh eggs rather than store-bought eggs was a much healthier option for our kids. Initially, these chickens were part of our bio class. They learn how to raise them from baby chicks to adult chickens and they become part of our family. There's a name for every single chicken in our, in our coop. They have learned responsibilities in preparing for this coop and enjoy their eggs. We do not keep the dirty coop. In fact, we've gone through the extra, we've gone the extra mile of using cedar shavings to, and maintenance it weekly to ensure that our coop is kept clean and no smell is emitted. Regrettably, as mentioned, we have before you due to one neighbor complaint. And a baked issue on one complaint is unreasonable, not only to us, but the residents of Escalon who are also taking part in raising chickens for our SFA kids, kids projects and act projects in our community. We find it wasteful, the city of Escalon, to use resources like this to adopt new city ordinances based on one single complaint. Not to mention Escalon community is known for two things, football and our agriculture. I don't want to talk for you guys. So this is my coop. This is my home. These are my hens. I'm the one that, with this deemed, this coop was already, my frustration is that this was already brought up and it was already deemed okay. The police have come up to my house numerous times. They even brought the recruiters or people working in the animal shelter to come look at our coop and say, this is how coops should look like. And I don't know why this is being brought up again when it was already deemed not a structure. We're not in any violations, nothing.
I have a question for you real quick.
Yes.
I couldn't tell from the pictures, is any part of that gutter or that pipe, does it go over their fence at all?
Not at all. It's on the fence line. So like, there's that two-by-four that's on top. It's like directly on top of that. Nothing goes over it.
I just couldn't tell from the picture, thank you.
One thing I want to get clear, I've heard references a couple of times this evening that everything was good until the new mayor came on. I had nothing to do with this, number one. Number two, that's weak. That's pretty weak. You know, this issue is an issue because it is an issue whether I agree or disagree with it, okay? We're here as a group trying to resolve an issue here. Everyone talks about the benefits of the chickens. No one's disputing the benefit of the chickens. We all understand chickens are valuable. We all understand the need for them. There's never an issue there. The issue is privacy and how it approaches or doesn't, that's the issue here.
I don't sit in my coop for six, eight hours a day. I go in the morning, I feed them, I give their eggs, I'm out of there. I'm not sitting there looking over their fence. I'm not over there, I'm not, I'm in and out.
I don't want to speak.
So what privacy are we discussing? I don't think anybody wants to sit in a chicken coop for hours a day.
I don't think you're understanding the point. The point is, you have another individual who feels he approached on. Whether it's right or wrong, it's something we need to resolve, one way or another.
So this is one disgruntled neighbor?
Well, we take them one at a time. I mean, it's not like we had a dozen to deal with. I mean, this business sets and precedents. We need to make sure, as we do in all our ordinances, that we address issues that come up. This is part of the process. And it's not saying that you're going to get what you want or who's going to get what he wants.
But what, it means you're jacked.
Let me finish. What it says is, we're all going to look at this and weigh it and try to figure out what's the best solution for everyone involved. That's what we're doing this evening. And we don't gain anything by accusing other people of doing things that they already did. We're going to talk about the issue and try to resolve it. That's what we're here for.
No one's pointing the finger. My issue is that people have already come out to my house. They've already, I've already had to get rid of the hens. I've done everything feasibly possible to make this, there's nothing wrong with it. Nobody, anybody was coming to my home. I had to walk me any day, anytime to walk in that coop and find an issue with it. There's none. And it was deemed none. And this was already brought before council and then taken off the board because there's no issue. And now here we are again. That's my issue.
I have a question. How was this issue raised initially?
Think about that. But if I recall correctly, it turned into a code enforcement complaint where somebody had called in and or the neighbor had called in and reported the chicken coop. And they were under the impression that setbacks would be required because in their, if I recall correctly, they considered it to be a structure of some sort. Therefore, it should have a setback requirement to it. And so they had asked us initially, initially to check the setback on that, to which we had responded if the setback at that time wasn't required.
And it's different than how it's being raised today. Request is to consider enacting a new ordinance to require setbacks.
Yeah, it's
But it's a portable, it's a portable structure. It's not permanent.
Just a minute, please. Can we have your opportunity?
And in regards to setbacks, so there is the setbacks. A fence issue, structures have to be five feet away from the fence, correctly in our law. They have their sheds on our fence line. So if anything, then they're in the wrong because their shed is on my fence line. It's not five feet away from my fence line, but I'm not sitting there nitpicking about a shed being on my fence line.
We dealt with the shed issue.
It's insane. I don't sit there and, there's so many things that I can nitpick about his property, his dogs and everything else. And I choose not to because it's not an issue for us.
Well, so, so here's, here's where we're at. So we're elected by the community and we need to represent all members of the community, right?
Yes. Can you talk to the mic, sorry, so they can hear you?
Okay. So, so our, our role is to represent everybody in the community. So if somebody comes to us with a concern, issue, a suggestion, whatever, I think we're required to accept that, have a discussion.
I understand that.
You know, and get input from the community. And it's pretty clear what the input is from the community, based on your post, based on the people that have shown up here and the discussion that we're having tonight. So, so it's not, you know, we're trying not to, you know, single you out or your coop or anything like that. It is an issue that was raised, so we're going to address it one way or another.
I understand that.
The, so, but to get back to exactly what the issue is, you know, we have an ordinance on, on the books and it allows you to keep chickens and allows you to get a population, you know, and other, you know, animals here or there. I don't see any reason why we need to change that. And it doesn't sound like anybody is asking us to consider that. So we move on from that issue. So then we look at the setbacks. Well, there's nothing on the books that says that you've got a setback requirement for your coop. All right, so we have no authority to do that. So then the next issue is, it's a nuisance. Well, police department goes out, it's not a nuisance, so it doesn't fall into that category. So the city is kind of taking itself through the steps that we would normally take when there's a code enforcement issue or some issue. So now we get to the point where now the request is, hey, the city should consider setbacks for chicken coops. All right, so what I'm hearing is, even if we were to move forward and consider an ordinance that would require setbacks for chicken coops, how's that going to impact yours? So are we going to go in and say, okay, we've been active this ordinance, so now everybody that is in violation of that go rip your chicken coops up and move them to a 15-foot setback? That's not the business that we're in. You know, we try and enforce issues when they're a public safety issue or it's a public nuisance. We've already addressed the public nuisance issue. It's not, according to the officers who are out there. So I just don't see that this is something that we need to take action on. I don't, I don't see it as, why do we need an ordinance at this point? I don't think it's going to fix the situation that you have there. So now you need to kind of look for other ways to try and resolve that problem.
And which we have.
Yeah.
And we're going to agree to it. So this is where I don't understand why we're doing this again.
And that's, and I'm just trying to
Excuse me, I'd like to, because there's been a lot of people being able to speak multiple times and I've waited patiently. My name is Raoul Barone again. Would I be allowed to speak?
If you want to speak, you're going to have to wait for your turn, Raoul. I'll get to you.
All right, I'm just saying, a lot of people are having the chance to repeat and flip that.
You're going to get your opportunity.
So as a council, we've got to figure out, okay, is there something that we can do that can help resolve a problem? And I don't know that, that we're there. I don't, I don't see it.
This isn't a council issue. This is a neighbor dispute.
And that's what
In which we've come to a agreement on, we talked about it and they said it was fine. And that's, again, it was deemed okay and here we are again.
And that's where I've got to wrap my head around it and make sure that we, the city, followed the rules, followed the rules that are on the books and made sure that, that we've done our due diligence as a city. And then a lot of times issues come up where we got to look at them and think, well, is there something that we should, some action we should take as a city, whether it's enacting a new ordinance, amending it or whatever. So my opinion on it is, based on the feedback that I've seen, it's not a city issue at this point. The city's taking the action that it can take. Now it leaves it back into a civil dispute between the two, two neighbors. So that's kind of my feeling on the whole, I mean.
All right, anybody else want to speak before we go on to the phone calls? Guys, anything else?
We still have some in the audience.
Well, let's let Raoul give his feedback. He's been waiting patiently, so let him speak. Go ahead, Raoul, what do you got?
All righty, thank you. So I just wanted to respond to a few things that I heard. I've been taking diligent notes. You know, I don't, I don't know, like, okay. The whole, the whole issue is not, and obviously it's been characterized and been said a few times. I don't, I don't, I don't know, I just don't appreciate the issue being said that we don't want chickens. We don't care if you guys have chickens. My parents don't care. That should be laid to rest. So anything about that's pretty much irrelevant at this point to beat a dead horse. You know, there was a, there was a lady that I believe spoke. I don't believe it was the neighbor. I believe it was the neighbor's friend whom they got the chickens from. And I'm just asking for clarification. But they said, she said that, I believe, she, she, she was the one who completed the chicken coop sometime in July and it took her two, about two weeks. If, if that's correct, or if, you know, my general paraphrasing is, you know, in the ballpark. I can attest that that is not correct, you know? The, the gentleman who lives next door, the husband of the lady who spoke afterwards, had completed that chicken coop in about two and a half days. And I remember because I was, I was house-sitting for my parents and I let them know, you know? And I let them know that, I let them know, hey, I, I let them know that, you know, there was, you know, that the gentleman next door is putting up a chicken coop, it looks like. And I'm like, did they talk to you about it, like, or anything? And they're like, no, we'll talk to them when we get home because, one, we don't have their phone number and it's not my necessary business to be speaking on behalf of my parents about what's going on next door at their home. I'm just house-sitting for them. So, you know, they have dogs. I maintain them. There's a lot of things in there that they threw out a lot of information and speculation that are just unfounded. There's, I don't know, there's, apparently they're going to put a pool in there and maybe that's why they don't want to move the chicken coop. And that should be taken into consideration. And if that's the case, and maybe they needed to, that's a reason why you should speak to your neighbors, you know, about putting in something that might not easily be moved later. Also, I've heard different things about the chicken coop just from hearing it right now. Some parts, they said there's an immovable part of the chicken coop that is adhered to the ground, but then other people have said that it is movable. So which one is it? Because I believe the distinction is that if it's immovable, it has to be five feet from the fence line. And if it's not movable, then it shouldn't be there to begin with. If that's okay.
Clarification, Raoul, it was only a portion of it that's movable, where the hen's house.
There's a portion of it that is movable and there's a portion of that is immovable. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the portion that is immovable, would it have to be five feet away from the fence line? Is that, is that my understanding? If something's immovable and it's a structure, it should be five feet away from the fence line?
No.
So typically, most structures, our code specifically provides an exemption to structures that are under 120 square feet. So if it was larger than 120 square feet, it would be subject to the side yard setback of five feet from the property.
Yeah, okay, so I appreciate the clarification. So that is not an, so then that's why, because the fact of the matter is, is that, you know, and I urge my parents to do this. I urge them to call the police department, animal control every day, which they did not because they had complaints about it every day. But my parents are very old school. Like I said, they've been there for over 35 years in Escalon. I grew up in Escalon. I went to Escalon High School, was a captain of my soccer team. We are as Escalonian as Escalonians can be. And we've never had disputes with our neighbors. I don't live in Escalon no more. I live in Modesto. I'm a teacher at the high school at Downey in Modesto. We've all been respected members of our community. My parents have coached soccer teams in the, you know, in the, since the 90s in Escalon. Even my dad helped the high school soccer team. So the thing is, is we feel that, and the characteristic of one of the board, of the members of the council, I don't know who it is, but it seems like you have a perfunctory kind of like set in stone or like a preconceived judgment that's going to happen. Because the thing is, is that although there might not be, you know, the police or the animal control that came out might not have said anything, but I don't believe that's true because they did tell them to take chickens away. They talked to my, my dad several times and said, yeah, you know what? Like, it probably should be moved because there is, there's a potential for disease. So there's different types of talk that's going on. And the whole fact of the matter is, is that it shouldn't have to get this far. They have a very big backyard. We just, my parents just don't want it on their, on their, on their fence line because they can't keep their pets the way that they want them, close to the chickens. There are a lot of flies. My parents, if you ask and you look at anything on their yard, my parents' yard is immaculate. And the backyard, you never get any types of flies from their dogs. We've had, we've had dogs, big dogs, since the 90s. And never once has there been a complaint about our dogs. Now, there, the big thing is this, is that we feel that there's consideration being for these, for the people that are there and they're the neighbors and there should be consideration for them. But where's a consideration for my parents? Because the thing is, is that's the whole point of the ordinance. Maybe the 15 feet is not necessarily going to be a one-size-fits-all solution, but we feel it's a step in the right direction, so maybe you guys can have and look at a, have a conversation about it afterwards and come up with a better solution. Maybe they can move it to a different, to the, to a different part of the yard, you know? And maybe they're going to have to change their pool plans. We hope that they don't have to. But also the thing is, why do we have to accommodate their nuisance to us when we've never presented any nuisance to them? When it could have easily have been stopped if they would have had a conversation with my parents ahead of time and talked about it? The other thing that I wanted to bring up The other thing that I wanted to bring up was. I'm, I'm sorry?
You need to wrap it up, your time is about up here.
Okay, I, I don't think that any of the other people were put on time, but I appreciate that and I will. How much time do I have left?
I'll give you two minutes.
Done in less than a minute, I apologize, thank you. Um, the other thing is, is that the, um, the lady, I believe their last name is Dutra, of the neighbors. Um, she said that there was an agreement between my parents about a fence, and that being the solution, that is incorrect. Um, my parent, my dad did talk to, um, the gentleman who's next door, and they did come to, um, putting a fence up, but it was a totally separate issue, it was just something that needs to be done, because the fence is really old. So that was never a solution for the chickens and the coop and the smell and everything. So, um, I just want you guys to take into consideration my parents' ideas and, and, you know, the fact that we've been members of the community for a long time, they don't complain about anything. And if they need to establish that this is a nuisance, they will be called every day that it is a nuisance and that there is flies. And if we can take, you know, pictures or videos of it, we will, but we don't know if that, you know, we don't want to violate anybody else's privacy, when it can easily be, you know, solved between neighbors or in this forum. We don't feel that it should go any further. That's all I have to really say.
Appreciate your input.
Thank you.
See, where are we at now? Let's see, we've had input from both sides. Um, you've already had an opportunity to put this little one, um, let's try to get to the point now, we're going to make a decision here. Then we have a suggestion, so, and this is just a discussion item.
Right, it's not part of any action.
Right. Tammy, how many animals are you allowed in the coop to have in your backyard?
Six.
Six, so I could have six dogs in my backyard.
Uh, the code limits you to four dogs.
Four.
Six small animals, which would include dogs, cats.
I have up to four dogs, small dogs.
Dogs are considered small, all sizes.
So I could have four masters in my backyard?
Yeah, so in the, in the, in the aspect that they had some chickens that had to be removed, they originally had eight chickens, and, and this was talking with the Dutra, and also through animal control, because animal control is the staff that gets sent out there. Um, there were eight chickens total in the coop, but they had the two dogs, and did you have other pets as well?
Two dogs.
Just two dogs.
Uh, and so they were required to, to remove the, the amount of chickens down to four, to be able to make the total of six, so.
Yeah, I think. That was the only question I had, just to get a determination of the animals on the property. Considering Mr. Barone's, uh, request for his, uh, ordinance change, I have a lot of holes to throw at that. He's more concerned with moving a chicken coop, but I guess a dog pen would be okay with four big dogs? Because he maybe only wants to move dogs, it'd be okay, but I don't want to move the chicken coop. Seems to be a specific target in that situation, when I've seen enough dogs in my day, next door in pens, they make a bigger mess of the chicken.
I would like to come a little bit to the defense of the Barones, it's totally a one-sided thing here, and a lot of people have got hyped up about, you know, their chickens being taken away. But Raoul is, is bringing to us the complaint of his, his parents. It's a legitimate complaint, somebody has, you know, they have a problem, they're, they're, you call the police and you go to the, the community. It doesn't, uh, the council. Uh, but I think that there's no decision to be made on this, and I think in an effort to move forward, we need to, you know, move, move on from this, I think.
Okay. I just think sometimes, you know, you, you want to try to find a way to accommodate and to help out, maybe reach a conclusion, you know, that satisfies everybody. Sometimes that's just not possible, and I think that, um, you know, to consider, you know, the, um, the Barones, you know, concerns, you know, I think we've done, uh, as good a job as we possibly can adding everything out. Um, my concern is that, like, it's a few months ago in this case, I think that in order to try to find some accommodation, uh, or some additional accommodation, uh, we're in progress to have the. And, um, we go in a lot of backyards, and I do see a lot of chickens, and I do see a lot of very clean chickens. And I do see, uh, most of them are closer to the back fence, side fence. And they do have to have a very high degree of cleanliness, of course, in town, not only because they don't want to be called on by the neighbors, but also they don't really respect. And it'd be, um, what'd be my recommendation, leave this one alone, and go on to the consent calendar.
Second.
So, council, I just wanted to share that there was a chat in the go-to meeting that, um, the Escalon High School poultry advisor is on there, have you guys had any questions regarding, uh, science questions of health sanitation?
The issue here is.
I just wanted to pass it along if that was available to you.
I see that. They haven't spoke yet?
No.
No.
Come on up.
We wanted to speak on this, and we're being shut down now, so.
Again, oh, here we go again. If you'd like to speak, you're welcome to come up and speak.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's what we came here for, because.
And there's no problem with that, nor the attitude.
No, not an attitude, sir, I was asking if I had a chance to speak. Mr. Mayor, and to the council members, my name is Cheryl T., and I've been a citizen of Escalon for fourteen years now. My daughter's a junior in the high school, and has attended this district for her entire life. As a student, the ag leadership program, she is required to complete an ag-focused project as part of her curriculum, which she's done every year for the last three years. This year she's selected raising chickens. We have fully supported her and believe that it's an important responsibility. We live in a farming community, and we have raised the district's encouragement of all of our children to learn the importance of agricultural science. Prior to acquiring the chickens, we checked the local ordinance and ensured we were within all of the rules. We have found that they make minimal noise, that the area is kept clean, and that their coop is unattractive to us, and it is invisible to our surrounding neighbors. By raising and caring them, caring for them, our daughter has benefited from learning to exhibit higher levels of responsibility and accountability. And we will benefit by collecting their eggs, using their waste as fertilizer for our garden, and feeding them the food scraps that we normally throw away. Additionally, our chickens have their own individual personalities, and without having them has brought a lot of fun to our family, is having these pets. The proposed coop setback requirements would box us and many other members of our community out of owning chickens altogether. As the layout of most of our properties, you do need to provide sufficient space to comply with the proposed distances. Furthermore, the distance is a fifteen feet away from any fence and structure is not based on any demonstrable need. A chicken coop does not present structural, fire, or access threat to any fence or structure. And that I, and I do not, we do not need or lack any part of the government to tell us how close we can put any possessions that we have on our property without some sort of emergency notices or exigent circumstances. I do respectfully ask that the council reject the proposed setback requirements. They will heed our freedom and the happiness of us, those of us who own them. We do not, however, see any problems for a discussion or reasonable changes should there be an issue of nuisance claimed by anyone in the community relating to the ownership of chickens. Thank you for clearing out the office.
Thank you. Okay, well, we love that, let Raoul speak.
Just to be clear, there, there is no ordinance in front of us. There's no, there was a setback, um, suggestion made by, I believe, Mr. Barone, but that's, there, there's nothing before us, there's no ordinance, there's no request to amend anything, so that's why I think the discussion's kind of come to a close. But if anybody else has anything they want to add?
I do, one more thing, I apologize if, if I could, for just thirty seconds.
That's you, man.
All right, you got thirty seconds, then we're done, that's it.
You got it. How could I go about actually proposing an ordinance?
You've already taken those steps.
The gentleman in the campaign just said that we're not taking, you guys said that we don't have an ordinance up for discussion.
That is correct. The discussion is whether or not we would make any kind of amendments to the ordinance, which is why this was put on there for discussion with the city council.
Okay, so how could I come up with an actual ordinance, not just an amendment?
Well, that would need to be the, the direction of the city council.
Okay. Okay, so I could propose one later or bring up the issue again?
You can bring it up, but it's still the decision of the council whether they move forward and consider any kind of changes to an ordinance.
Understood, thank you.
All right, thank you, Raoul, go ahead, please.
Okay, well, then I guess that kind of answered my question, because I was just wanting to know, will this be the end of it? Because it sounds like this was already presented once upon a time, and it sounds like it was already a done deal, brought up again. So after today, will this be a done deal? Or are you not?
It depends, it depends, because there's no definition on what we did, there's nothing, we didn't do anything. So there's really nothing we changed. We can't prevent him from coming down and recommending or offering a change, we can't do anything about that.
So.
That, he has the right, just like you do, to come and oppose it, and it's nothing we can do about it.
I'm not saying oppose it or, I'm just wondering if this is going to be coming up again, or if this is a done deal.
So the last time that this, this came up, you know, it was asked during staff communications. And at that time, it wasn't chosen to put it on as a discussion item. So if somebody presents something, then we would, during staff communications, ask the council, if they tell, if they direct staff to put it on the agenda, then that's when the discussion would come in place regarding it. If they, if they don't desire to discuss the matter, then it wouldn't come back on the agenda.
And I don't want to read the tea leaves, but if we tonight decide we're not going to do anything with this, and that would be a fairly safe indicator that unless something circumstantial changed, we would probably, even though it became empty, you know.
I don't know.
But at least as of now, you know.
I don't know the law well enough to say it when we're. Yeah, and we have an attorney who might be able to answer that question. You want to ask her?
Anne?
What, so, what, what the?
Question Anne was, whether or not this is a dead horse or can it be revisited? And that was kind of.
Yeah, well, I thought, I think Tammy pretty much answered that. I mean, the city council can always reconsider, but right now, the city council has made its direction clear that it does not wish to amend the ordinance. Now, something could happen, yeah, so it's dead, it's dead for now, I would say.
I appreciate that, thank you. Okay, then after your question, it's dead for now, it can be brought up again? Sean, yes, let me make it short. Sure. So just for my information and everybody else in Escalon, if an ordinance passes, it's not retroactive, correct? The whole, even if you guys directed an ordinance for this issue, this chicken coop is already prior to the ordinance, so.
I don't, I don't have an answer to that.
Hold on, Anne is trying to answer.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so the gen, generally, the general rule is that an ordinance is not retroactive, but if the city council wants to, they can make it retroactive, in the language of the ordinance itself.
So it's a little volatile.
Normally, yeah, normally it's not retroactive, but it, it could be.
Okay, so you're going to the city council, basically?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on. We're done with this, beat it to death?
That's your call.
All right, uh, do you want to, you got any more you want to add to it?
Thank you, everybody, for your input. I mean, it's absolutely critical to get your input when these kind of things come up, so it's nice to know where the community stands on it, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, and next, let's move on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar, these items are considered routine by nature and act upon on a single action unless requested by an individual council member or member of the public for special consideration. I think number five I wanted to talk about, is number five, uh, yeah, number five I'd like to pull.
And number four, staff would like to pull, I need to.
Wait, what was number five, it's, uh, F. I'm sorry, you want to pull number, in, I see.
Consent calendar, number four.
Number four.
Regarding, yeah, there's a couple, I just need to note that there's a couple of changes in the contract.
Hang on, let me.
I found the frame here.
Oh, I see, up here, okay, I'm going to pull them down. Okay, that's a step indication I want to discuss, it wasn't on the calendar, okay, I'm good.
Okay, so just on item number four, staff would just want to say that in section three point two point two, it should reference exhibit A of the contract, and that, um, the contract will be signed by the city manager, not the mayor, as, that's printed on there right now.
I'm going to watch staff recommendation.
Those will see, and I, regarding.
Can anybody else talk?
Numbers nine, seven, six, one, and seven, four, six, oh, six.
Okay, so.
Hold on, I think we have somebody online.
Hello?
Yeah. Uh, I'd like to address number four.
Is that correct?
Yes, so, so we can pull number four.
Okay, we'll pull number four, and then number two's been, um.
Abstained.
Abstained by Robert, so we'll go for the balance, I'll accept a motion for the balance. We had a motion? Yeah. Okay, we have the motion. I'm sorry?
I think a motion for the balance.
Very good. I'll accept a second, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed. Motion carries by vote, all right, let's move to number four, go ahead, Kurt.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Al. And a, a lot of the items that I want to discuss tonight, I had the, uh, pleasure of going over with Justin Collins this morning. And, uh, I have a lot of confidence in Justin, and I, and I feel real good with what our conversation was. Aside from the conversation with Justin, I would, procedurally, um, I, on this issue, I didn't see an RFP go out since, uh, we have a, uh, a bid situation. Uh, so procedurally there, we don't get to see the same information that we normally do with RFPs, uh, where we have a listing from all the people that did, uh, showing their costs, their cost per hours for, uh, personnel and so on, uh, like we have almost for everything else. The increase that's being proposed, uh, a, a, and I think Jeff is the only one that's really going to feel this, uh, is over, uh, it's a hundred and four dollars more a year for mow and blow, essentially. And so now we're, we're going from last year's three hundred and eleven dollars per EDU to four hundred and fifteen dollars per EDU. So that's going to bring the proposed budget to at least fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars, which, come on, that is a lot of money. And, and, and I asked Justin, and, and I don't know that he, he was able to pull this information together. I, I asked him, I said, Justin, what, what does a, uh, a, a, a frontline, uh, beginning employee in public works, uh, make? And he thought, uh, just roughly, it was like twenty bucks an hour or something. I figured, okay, well, make it twenty-five with benefits, uh, that equals fifty-two thousand dollars a year. And, and, and I, I look, I look at what, uh, was charged in the past, and I don't want to, I, I, I'm, I'm curious as to why the city can't hire somebody, and we can control our costs, this is where I'm going. The, these costs, that's, that fifty-nine thousand is base. That, uh, thirty thousand dollars of negative charge is going to go up by two and a half percent per year. And, uh, that's going to get staggering here in the next ten years. If we had, I think it's time to reflect and look at, well, hiring an employee to handle these LLDs, I think the city can control the costs better, um, a, and, and if they can't, I'd like to hear why, uh, on it, I'm certainly, you know, willing to listen to, to why. If, if they want the money, it's going to get, you know, more and more, and I, I'd like the city to address this as a professional bid, just like they would do anything else. When you look at, you know, what's going to come up later tonight with the sidewalks, we have the city costs versus a, excuse me, a contractor. And I think that that would have been a good thing to do with this. So I, I'd like to hear council's, uh, position.
I like your staff's position.
So, um, sorry, I was responding to go-to meeting. Um, so I, I'm not sure, but I think he said something about like twenty-five dollars and, okay, so first off, I'll go with the RFP. Our purchasing policy does not require, when there are certain limitations and a, and a total cost of a contract, to go through an RFP process, it does require us to obtain quotes, which was done in this situation, where there were three quotes that were obtained from reptile landscaping companies. So that's the response to the RFP.
I want to ask you a question, Tammy, on the three bids, they were close, most of them?
Um, yeah, it's identified in there.
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me right now, but look it up, just, but generally speaking, they were both pretty close?
So for Belatera, the lowest bidder was twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred annually, and the other two bids, one was thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty, and the other was thirty-six thousand.
Okay.
So for the states, it was eight thousand, one hundred. So for the states, it was eight thousand, one hundred to the lowest bidder, and then we, um, we had two other bids, one was the eight thousand, one hundred, and one was eight, or ninety-nine hundred, sorry.
So technically, we didn't have to have an RFP, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that took care of that question. What was the other question?
Um, I think it was referencing whether or not, uh, if the city took over the landscape services.
With what?
With our manpower.
We don't have it.
We don't have it. It would technically require potentially hiring another employee um, and purchasing of equipment. Um, based on, like, the hourly rate that I use for an, an, another item that's on here, um, I think that we would technically come higher, um, for this, uh, than the current low bids of the landscaping. Um, but we don't have staffing right now, we don't have to do that.
We don't have the expertise.
I, I, I think the city oughta look at a broader range here. I think that this points out very seriously how, how costs are kind of out of control, and that if we look at the city in totality, one employee could handle the, all of the landscaping currently employed by contractors, not that the city's already doing, but, but that the contractors are doing, and, and, and could do it cheaper. I think all of those costs are gonna go up, I mean, this is a significant cost, this is, this is almost a thirty percent rise. If, uh, if the city really did the study and looked at what it costs for Holden Park, Main Street Board, all of the LLDs, they may come to the conclusion that, hey, you know, if we hired a, a full-time employee, we'll have the equipment, it would be cheaper than having the contractor. And, and, and I, that's what I'm asking you to do, to do the study, figure those things out, let's look at it long-term versus, uh, this is short-term. This is gonna be a shock to people that look at their property tax and come next year, and, you know, may or may not hear about it, but I, I think in the long run, it, it might be a real prudent to look at all of our costs and see if we are able to do it ourselves. One, one thing I, I left out, and I, and you appreciate this, Robert, is the, the contract, uh, only for tree trimming, only goes up to eight feet. And, and Justin says that's typical, and anything over that, that they, the city does, uh, and goes through. And they did, they came through Bell, uh, last year and did a, a longer tree trimming. That's an additional cost to the district, so this cost here is like a million. It, the city's already doing more work out there anyway, so why don't we look at, you know, doing a true life then, and hiring an employee?
Well, council members, we want any feedback on this recommendation?
A couple of questions on, um, Beliterra, the fourteen thousand dollars, how long has that price been enacted? How long has it been, fourteen thousand dollars?
Since the district was established.
In what year?
Two thousand and one.
So for nineteen years, whoever has that contract's gonna be getting forty thousand dollars, no raise. No elevation in the contract.
Correct.
I know the state's is about thirteen years old, that's the same, that's.
Two thousand and six, I wanna say, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, mm-hmm, and that was the same.
Two thousand and seven, when they actually started putting houses.
Yes.
Is the contract, um, like, is it just for one year, or is it for a certain amount of time, or how's it work?
This contract is a three-year contract with the ability to extend it, um, additional five, one-year terms.
That condition, does it talk to the raises in that period of time, any increases?
Yes, so it could be subject to a CPI, but not to exceed the two point five percent.
I think, um, I think part of the issue, though, of the treaty, especially Beliterra, is that, uh, I think it is an April high requirement, how would expectation is to have it actually pretty much higher, if you want, want to be able to accommodate homeowners there. But the only way to do that is have different equipment, things like that, and that. Again, even though, you know, you know what the requirement is, that, that the expectation is more, you'd wanna try to do more, and therefore that's gonna result in increased costs as well.
I think that Kirk makes a good point, and I would be in favor of seeing those numbers, so the staff would figure out how much it would cost to hire people to do it versus, you know, outsourcing, and if it's lower to do one than the other, then, I mean, I don't think anybody would disagree with that. I think what we think is that it's probably more expensive to hire, you know, employees to do it rather than do this, so I'm in favor of seeing some numbers on that, you know, from what Kirk brings up.
But are, are we wanting to hold up, I mean, cause this.
No, I'm not gonna hold this up.
Okay.
I'm just, for future.
Sure.
If I.
To explore within this first three years.
Okay. Uh, Tim?
No, I agree with.
You agree, you're very good, Robert? So, okay, so it's a consensus of the council that we're not gonna hold up the current situation, but we are gonna do a survey or a study to give back to us in terms of what it might cost the city if they were to undertake the endeavor. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
That's mine too. Kirk, does that meet what you're talking about?
I, I thank the council for looking into that. I think that, uh, i- if you look at, and, and I don't wanna pick on Robert, if you look at what, uh, is charged to the city, uh, just through one contract, that's over a hundred and ten thousand a year. I think we can afford a, uh, employee, uh, to get the work done and be available to Public Works if it's a full-time employee, and I appreciate con-, uh, councils looking into it and their considerations. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kirk. All right, now, that was the end of the discussion for that item, but now we vote on it. The, moving to approve, we have a second. Any discussion?
I can vote on this, right?
You're out of it.
Yes.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five oh. All right, very good. Um, did we discuss five already, or did we pass that already?
We did.
All right, well, I didn't get a question I wanted to ask, and the question was simply this. When you decided to redirect the money for a different project, did that change the contractor that had the contract?
There was no contract.
There was no.
No, we hadn't even finished the engineering for the project.
Good enough, that's all I needed to know, thank you, we're done. All right, let's move to the next item. Here, we got staff communications.
Yes, staff communications, so, um, in the council agenda, our department reports, um, the treasures report, police department, animal control, development services, building department, public works, water department, and the wastewater, um, reports for December, and then added into this, uh, month's reports are, um, it's indicated NG project update, but it also, um, there is also an update for our, all of our other CIP projects also in there. So staff is available to answer any questions on those?
I have a question, I'm sure Kirk would be interested to be asked, but what's the, is there an update or anything on the wastewater treatment plant, how that's going?
So we are currently working, um, to identify where there is potential funding, and, um, last week we had a conference call with USDA, and, um, so we're currently working through some of that.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, and then we're just, uh, you wanted to talk about, Tammy, on this, uh, staff communications?
Sure.
What's next?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did wanna point out that, um, we are now accepting credit cards in the office.
Good.
Um, yeah, we have switched vendors, um, and changed rates, so that.
For the water, is it for the water, or?
That's for, it's for water, business license.
Anything.
Um, there's a limit on what you can charge, because sometimes building permits can get ex- extensive, but twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five, that's pretty good, good money.
Yeah, so, um, we do have that option available, and we are working on getting it at our animal shelter as well. We have to.
Are we charged on the fee for the use of the carts?
We are not at this point.
Thank you. I know that would come up. Okay, uh, how about the rest of the report?
Did you, Dominique, did you have anything else for it? For staff report?
Any other questions, council, on the, uh, staff communication?
I don't know.
Oh, yes, so there was one other item.
Go ahead.
Just wasn't sure.
Um, in recent, uh, recently, uh, staff was doing some code enforcement, and, uh, there was a particular code enforcement regarding the Azores Hall, um, because they have two C-VAN storage containers in their parking lot, and those are technically not allowed. Um, so staff is looking for some direction from the council. Um, if we continue these efforts, or what direction the council would like us to go. We have enforced these containers on other properties, so, um, we're, we know that they've reached out to council members, so we just, we're looking for some direction on it.
All right, Jeff would like to speak, then I'll follow Jeff.
I mean, uh, it sounds like it was, uh, not necessarily a figure, that there was, uh, city taking action based on other actions that have been taken in that particular area. I think there's a public benefit, uh, derived from the Azores Hall, from, uh, the people who use that hall, and I don't think we need to take any unnecessary action on those containers. It sounds like if we wanted to add additional containers, we might wanna address that with them, but, uh.
I would make that recommendation, yeah.
Do the existing, they don't seem to create any problem for the surrounding area, they use them for storage, they participate in a number of city functions, and assist with city functions, yeah, it's not a public safety issue, not a nuisance, so I, I think we just, uh, stop reinforcing action at this point on the existing containers, but, uh, just advise them that there's a potential, if they try to add additional containers, that this city might need to take enforcement.
All right, I would echo that sentiment. Uh, is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of leaving them as they are, with the exception that they will not add on to? You guys, was there? Okay, so you were good there. Okay, any objections? Any more discussion? Okay, Tammy, I think you have your direction. Do you need to vote?
No.
Okay, very good.
Consensus is good.
All right, what would be next?
Matters presented from the audience.
That's what we're gonna do now. This is an opportunity for everybody in the audience to like to speak on any non-aggrandized item, and you have a maximum of five minutes, please. Uh, just come to the podium and please give us your name.
I'm Anne Shaddix, and, um, I'm here to ask the council to consider putting together a team of seniors to talk about senior housing needs in Escalon. What we heard earlier was the transitional plan for people moving from homes into a smaller, like, I'm talking about senior affordable housing for, for seniors, and the, the design be such that it meets our needs. So I'm asking the council to consider to point, appoint a task force to talk about what type of place do seniors really want to have, and then see if it's possible to find land and a builder to accommodate that.
Not to interrupt you, but, uh, we've discussed this multiple times for the last few years, and just recently, pretty, uh, pretty currently, we've discussed this, and, uh, we're, and I say we, I mean the council and the staff, are considering reaching out to the company that currently is involved with the Heritage House. Okay, and we feel that that might be a good solution for what we want. Not to say that we couldn't have a senior council, there's not a problem with that either, I think we could look into that as well. For the feedback, like you suggested, we might be interested in learning from you, because obviously, your situation's a little different than most of ours, being elderly, and you might have things that we don't think about just yet. So, um, I don't know how we'd go about this. Uh, Tammy, what do you think?
Um, I also want to, I just wanna interject, you mentioned the Heritage House, I'm not talking about low-income housing. Well, I'm talking about affordable housing for seniors.
Can you explain the difference? So I'm not, I'm not clear.
Yes, it's, it's very easy. Uh, low income means that you have a certain, um, income, and you have to be considered low income to qualify to be in the Heritage House.
Pardon me if I'm wrong, staff, but isn't that what the Heritage House is?
Yes, that's what she's saying.
Oh, okay, what are you suggesting?
So we're talking about a step above that, which is affordable housing.
Okay.
If people can sell a home.
Right.
Rented place in, uh, to be in senior housing.
You want it to be rent, rent, rental types?
Not purchase.
Okay, well, we've, we're addressing that right now, actually. Uh, I've been working with Dominique and Tammy, and Jeff's been involved in some of the conversations.
And I've heard you address it, but I believe you need some senior input.
I haven't a problem with that. I think, again, what I told earlier, we talked about other committees. Committees are wonderful if you can get people to abide by the standards of the committee, which is to show up, to put in the time, to document it, to go out and do some research. If you're willing to do those things and stick to it and do it in a proper manner, and not encumber any more of their time, I think that's doable, because they got enough stuff to do already, so as far as appointing a group, I don't know who would be to appoint.
Maybe, maybe what it is that you should do is hold a workshop strictly on the senior housing.
Oh, there's a good idea.
So that the seniors could come and do input that way.
Would that, would that.
Anything to get our input.
Okay, we'll work with staff, and staff will try to find a time in the calendar that we can get together with some of the seniors and take input, and then we'll put that in the package we're trying to put together and get this done for us. How's that?
Thank you, and whatever assistance I can provide, I'd be happy.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, I have no issue with it. I think it's a great idea. All right, anyone else like to come speak?
Hi, Sean Strowman, I'm here to talk about chicken. You little songbird. On a more serious note, uh, two items to note. First of all, thank you to Tammy, uh, Dominique, for setting up the joint workshop tonight. I think it's very, very helpful, and I would encourage that we try to do those, uh, once or twice a year, if possible. Uh, secondly, we didn't really get a chance to wrap up that workshop, it was just kinda, because we were running on time, but one of the things that I really wanted, uh, all of you to know, I mean, you already know this, but I wanted in the record, oh, what an amazing job that Dominique and Diana do, when they put together their packages for, uh, the planning commission presentations. Uh, recently, we've had pretty thick packets, and, uh, it makes our job so much easier. So just wanna really give a shout out to Dominique and Diana, and the rest, and Tammy, and Jenny, and the rest of the city team, for all of your hard work when preparing those packages, 'cause it makes, it's so simple, so I just wanted you guys to be aware of that in front of the city council staff.
Thank you.
That's all I had to say.
Good enough. All right, is there anyone else who'd like to come up and say anything? You're welcome to, if you have five minutes, you can get whatever's on your chest off of it, and, uh, you're welcome to do it. I don't know if anybody's gonna run on down here, so since no one's making an effort to move up, we're gonna move on. Um, we have a public hearing to consider the following administrative matters. Review and accept the annual audit report for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. That.
Tonight, before the council is, uh, the review and to accept the annual audit report for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, twenty. Each year, the city of Escalon contracts with an independent firm to prepare an audit report of the preceding year's financial statements. The audit for fiscal year nineteen, twenty has been completed. The audit document finalized, and the auditors prepared to make a report to the council. The audit was given to the council under a separate copy, or, excuse me, separate cover. Um, as council may recall, the management letter covers issues which were principal con- considerations that affected the auditor's ability to complete the report, and this year's management letter has no findings that need to be addressed. Included in the audit is the management's discussion and analysis that is prepared by staff. This discussion and analysis provide an overview of the city's financial activities for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Staff has followed the fiscal policies adopted by the council. Staff is pleased to report a savings in the general funds of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, which is due primarily to savings and expenditures, and some unanticipated revenues. At the council meeting on January twenty-first of two thousand twenty, staff, oops, yeah, staff presented the nineteen, twenty mid-year budget that projected a deficit of a hundred and sixty-three thousand, which included equipment reserve purchases, debt reserve, and CalPERS unfunded liability reserve. With the ending surplus, the general fund reserve balance is now four point six million, which includes four hundred thousand, four hundred and twelve thousand of non-spendable. operating budget reserve of two point, uh almost two point one million, equipment reserves of two hundred and five thousand, debt service reserve of seven hundred and eight thousand and CalPERS unfunded liability reserve of three hundred and fifty thousand. With an undesignated amount of eight hundred and eighty thousand, the general fund received a payment of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars from the sewer industrial fund and interest charges, and interest was charged of six thousand dollars to the loan, leaving a balance due of a hundred and ten thousand. There's also an outstanding loan from the general fund to the library fund with an outstanding balance of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand. These loans are reflected in the non-spendable amount of the fund balance, which includes the fiscal year seventeen eighteen interest-only loan for the downtown properties of a hundred and forty-three thousand, which were, uh will be due in March twelfth of two thousand twenty-one. Since the audit, there's only a remainder of fifty-eight thousand of um that hundred and forty-three thousand that is due. So included in the staff report is a breakdown of the capital improvement projects that were completed um and then capital improvement projects that are still in progress. Um and uh I will let uh our auditor, Michelle Gallagher, uh do her presentation and then I have a couple other items, I'll go over with the, with the council.
Uh good evening, Mayor, Council, uh like she said, I'm Michelle Gallagher, I'm the lead auditor once again on your audit. Uh this is gonna be boring, this is gonna be the same thing I said last year. But um we come in every year about June, uh to start reviewing the books and uh the internal controls to make sure everything that you say you should be doing, we're doing. Uh and once again this year, everything was pretty smooth, even with the COVID um situation, everything's pretty much done electronically anyway, so we were able to timely uh manage um to get the audit completed. Um the opinion on the, on my audit letter is unqualified, which is the best opinion you can get. And then the other letter that I have to do is the internal control letter um at which would state any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in your internal controls in this accounting department and of which, again, they're on it. So if you have any further questions, we, that's pretty much.
Counsel, any questions, anybody?
Glad to see we did better than I thought we were gonna do despite that second quarter of two thousand twenty.
Yes, for sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle. So um staff is requesting with the surplus that we increase our equipment reserve by fifty thousand um to accommodate the continued efforts in maintaining our vehicle fleets and other equipment and then um is proposing an additional hundred and fifty thousand to CalPERS unfunded liability reserve. If proposed increases to reserves are approved, it will leave a balance for the equipment reserve of two hundred and fifty-five thousand and then for CalPERS, it would be at five hundred thousand dollars. Um.
Balance is what's due?
That would be our reserve amount.
Okay.
So something that the council could consider with that reserve, we put that money in there in anticipation of future um large increases. Um and it looks like things have kinda leveled out, but we can consider putting that down as a lump sum and um looking over the years and seeing how that will affect us in the future. Uh there is some savings and we could do different.
For prepaid, there's a savings?
Uh huh, there is, yeah.
What's the percentage on, do we know?
Uh I don't have the percentage, but I do have um dollar amounts.
Okay, let's see.
So they are thinking that the, the whole situation being a level out, that's what they're looking at about two thousand twenty-one?
Yeah.
Do something because they're gonna bankrupt everybody.
Yeah.
So I was trying to get this to be a little bit bigger, but what this is, is here's two thousand twenty and if we did no additional um payment, uh that's what it's gonna cost, that's our unfunded for the years, so.
For how many years, Tammy?
So this is, this is going out till two thousand forty-eight.
So in two thousand forty-eight, we have a total of seven hundred and fifty thousand or no?
That would be our annual payment.
Our annual payment, very good, okay.
So if we paid the hundred K, starting in about two thousand twenty-three, you start seeing a reduction in when you compare it. Yes, so over, it goes to about twenty um two thousand forty-one, you see savings. And that, if you do a hundred thousand dollars additional payment, it's two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in savings. If you were to do two hundred thousand dollars, it would be four hundred and forty.
And that's, we're how many years?
So that's basically from two thousand twenty to two thousand forty.
You're talking about twenty-eight years or twenty-six years?
You're talking twenty years, basically.
So in twenty years, uh if we prepaid, in twenty years, we bring it down by how much?
So it depends upon which increment you go to, if you go a hundred K, it's two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in savings, if it's two hundred K, it's four hundred and forty thousand. Three hundred thousand, it's six hundred and sixty, four hundred K, it would be eight hundred and fifty-eight and then five hundred K is like over, just a little over a million dollars in savings.
We're trading today's dollars for tomorrow's dollars. And my other question is, um this money that we wanna move around, there is no other place in our budget that is in dire need of it that we, so this would be a difficult case.
So, so yeah, we've set this money aside specifically for, well, I'm proposing an additional hundred and fifty to me, so there's three hundred and fifty currently that's been set aside. But I just wanted to give the council those options, of course, it takes away the money that's in your bank, so it's not liquid then.
Which is no interest, it's no matter, we don't have the interest.
The interest rates are quite low right now, that is true, so um anyway, it it is something where we've been putting this money in the reserve in, in response to CalPERS, so I just wanted to give the council that option.
It's probably the best bang for our buck, is what you're saying.
Right.
Even so, one-time payment, so if you, if you make the five hundred thousand dollar payment twenty twenty, twenty point one, I guess, then we just realize the savings over the next twenty-eight years and we actually see a million dollar savings.
Correct.
So the future time, lump sum.
Correct.
So that's kind of what the intent for setting that money aside was.
Right.
You do something.
How long would it take us to get to the three fifty before the one fifty-one happens?
Um.
Obviously, you have some good and bad years, so.
Uh well, I think that's just been within the last three years.
Three years, okay.
It may be four, but I I'm almost positive it's three years, we started small and then the last couple of years, we were able to put a little bit more in there.
You're, you're not asking to move the money to do the down payment tonight, though, your answer?
No, well, I mean, I'm asking, you know, if it, if it's something that we're interested in, then we can definitely pursue that and.
I'm just wondering if there's anything we're missing or consequences by movement that's gonna create a problem anywhere else in the budget, you don't see that happen?
No, those funds are set strictly right now, currently just for CalPERS, so they're not used for anything else.
Okay, well, let's have some feedback, David, how do you feel about it?
So the three fifty is currently locked in, that's the only place it can go, correct?
Yes, it's been designated for that.
So the one fifty is not, and you're saying right now we can do something else with that one potentially, or no?
Yeah, I mean, staff is proposing to put it towards CalPERS, but that doesn't, I mean, council can tell me to put it someplace else.
But there's no, like you said previously, there's no pressing.
No.
Matter.
Well, I want, that type of money we're talking about can't be used for much more, that's the other.
Great bang for our buck, I'm not, I'm just trying to make sure that we're not missing something as well.
Me too.
Um I get it. I have no problem with moving the one fifty over to the fund and then, like a little more due diligence before we make that.
Sure, absolutely.
That movement of the money on this, but what stops us in a few more years, we continue to bank more money on that? Is there more realized savings if, actually, how about another year, we get a hundred grand, we moved another hundred over, does that realize even more savings?
Of course, yes.
That's something we can extrapolate out and see some numbers that might.
That's what we wanted to do.
That's, yeah.
But I think she's on the right path, I think the idea is to get the burden down.
Yeah.
Like prepaid and the money that's made for it anyway.
Yeah.
We're not getting any money in the bank, that's a joke.
No.
So we just will take full advantage and opportunity to lower those rates.
Agreed.
Okay, Peter, any?
No comments.
Okay, how about you, Jeff?
I agree, okay.
And Robert?
Yeah, I'm ready to go, I'm motion.
All right, do it.
Yeah, with the, the, the council accepts annual audit report for fiscal year nineteen to twenty and authorized.
One second, one second here, we got a little info we missed.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of.
Okay, go ahead.
And authorize an increase of fifty thousand dollars to equipment reserve and a hundred and fifty thousand to CalPERS unfunded liability reserve.
Okay, uh do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, okay, before we go on, Gary, did you wanna add something?
Yeah, Gary, pass him, please, please, please pass this. CalPERS is gonna come back to fight so many municipalities, it's not gonna be fun, we're gonna see a lot of bankruptcies. If you're thinking ahead and it looks like you're leaning that way, it'll be the best thing you can do for the city, especially when you can save almost a million dollars.
Yeah, it's worth it, then that's kind of where we're coming from, okay, so we have the motion, we have a second, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Carrie's five oh, thank you, gentlemen, I'll move to the next item and that would be the eighth.
Thank you, Michelle, for sticking it out.
Pass the fixo, excuse me. All right, number eight, consider an additional appropriation of ten thousand two hundred and twenty bucks from the city general fund and four thousand two hundred from the local transportation fund to the, have a tree, McHenry Avenue sidewalk from Roosevelt Avenue to Ori. Okay, staff?
So at the meeting on November sixteenth, Anne Shaddix, our representative of the San Joaquin County Commission on Aging, made a presentation to the city council regarding the sidewalk conditions along McHenry Avenue due to trees planted in the sidewalk. Ms. Shaddix requested that the council invite her back at a future meeting with a plan to make repairs to the sidewalk. Essentially sidewalks are the responsibility of a property owner according to the State of California Street and Highway Code Sections fifty-six-ten and fifty-six-eleven. While the city would typically notify the property owner and request that they mitigate the sidewalk issue, it was staff's understanding that the city council wanted staff to work with the property owners. Staff's proposed compromise is that Public Works would remove the trees and stumps and the property owners would replace the concrete. Staff is not proposing to replace any trees um at this time or any of these trees. The Public Works Superintendent has evaluated the sidewalk sections and provided estimated costs and staff time for his rehabilit, for this rehabilitation. Um we also received or obtained a quote from a contractor for the tree removal and the stump grinding. So the city owns a small section of the empty lot that's at eighteen twenty-eight Roosevelt, which is right before the Marvell Shopping Center, or their back. The very first entrance, the, the most northern entrance.
It used to be utilities or.
Yes.
Or something.
Yeah, so this one tree is adjacent to the lot, needs to be removed and replaced with concrete. Um we also have property in front of city hall, the police department, that there are five trees to be removed and replaced with concrete. The estimated cost for city locations is approximately thirteen thousand utilizing Public Works and ninety-seven hundred utilizing a contractor. So staff put together what estimated Public Works man hours would be, the average cost for a Public Works maintenance worker and then compared it to what, with, with the contractor. So staff would still, um Public Works staff would still be doing the replacement of the concrete and the contractor would be doing the removal of the trees.
Who's grinding?
Um and the contractor would be grinding, so the contractor basically quoted four hundred and fifty dollars per tree to remove the tree and do the stump grinding.
That's a good price, my question was on the concrete, uh when we refer the, the lot on Roosevelt, you had a concrete, the whole lot?
Not the, just the section of sidewalk where the tree is.
Oh, where the tree had the encroached on, oh, okay, good, oh my god, let's just do that.
Yeah.
Okay, good enough.
So we're looking at, if we utilize, staff's recommendation is to move forward utilizing a contractor and that's what the appropriation is based on. And so contractor for the eighteen twenty-eight McHenry is eighteen, eighteen hundred and seventy dollars. For McHenry, or I'm sorry, for the city hall and the police department, it's about seventy-eight hundred dollars. And these are all estimates and that, you know, cost of concrete could come in less, um the time that's spent could be less too. Um these are strictly an estimate, so the city has an agreement with the property owner um of the Marvell Shopping Center that uh we get the trees and the stumps removed, that the owner will replace the sidewalk concrete. And so estimated cost to, if the city was to do that, would be seventy-four hundred dollars, utilizing a contractor, we're looking at thirty-six hundred dollars.
What we hope becomes of the hole of the trees where nothing, just cement?
That's where the concrete's gonna go.
And we have no more trees?
Correct.
Okay.
No trees, no payers.
No, correct.
Payers will be removed.
Yes, yes, the payers would be removed.
They'll work for a while, but it just got an end.
That, as much as I hate tearing out a bunch of trees and stuff, there's no way that you can salvage that sidewalk to be walkable or usable.
We would have to have, we'd have to use land that wasn't ours and that would be the only way we could do it. Well, first of all, I don't know why, here's one thing we have to keep in mind, when we decide to do any of these types of projects and put trees in place, it's, but the thing about the impact on that area. You know, when we plant trees, and people have to understand, they're gonna grow, and when they grow, they're gonna create problems. So when we plant these trees, I think we, we have to be smart enough to learn from our previous mistakes. And we need to plant trees that don't approach, to create those types of problems, we need to put wells in that protect them from expanding too far or not.
So, so our, well, our approach going, moving forward has been that we recommend the trees in the landscape sections of the, the businesses, not in the sidewalks.
That's a much better way, yeah, it takes the owner's selfless anyway.
So the, the last property is the twenty-eight McHenry Avenue, um the city has an agreement with this property owner also to remove the trees and the tree stumps and the owner will replace the sidewalk. City staff to do this project would be thirty-four hundred and to utilize the contractor, it's thirteen fifty.
All right.
There are some other trees along McHenry Avenue sidewalks, Frontier, Les Schwab, O'Reilly's, Dollar General and an empty lot on the corner of Countrywood Lane, at this time, these trees are not affecting the sidewalk. Staff is recommending exploring the possibility of moving the trees out of the sidewalk area and into the landscape area of the abutting properties, because they're younger trees, they're, they're, it's, it's uh it could potentially be that we could remove the tree and, and replant. Um so the full project would require three hundred and eighty-five hours of public works, could take four to six weeks based on other routine maintenance that will need to continue. With the utilization of a contractor, it would only require a hundred hours of public works um for the concrete replacement. Staff does recommend the utilization of the contractor based on cost and efficiency. If city council approves the project and approach, um and the approach, the contractor anticipates starting in mid to late February completing their portion of the work no later than the end of March. Public Works and anticipates that they would be able to complete the concrete replacement by middle of April. There is some extra time included in the start and finish period just to allow for unexpected delays. There is staff time allocated to street maintenance, the hours associated with this project would be above those in the current allocation. Public Works staff allocation would need to be reduced in other departments. Staff has calculated the estimate, estimated net result would be an increased cost in the general fund of three thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars and then that reduction, there would be a reduction in the enterprise funds um for that. Uh the total proposed work is estimated to cost the city sixteen thousand, including contingencies. Money specifically for sidewalk improvements are limited, but a small portion are received from our local transportation funds. The city currently has forty-two hundred dollars that could be allocated to this, these proposed improvements. The remaining funds, eleven thousand eight hundred, less the savings um in other general fund departments of fifteen hundred dollars results in the additional appropriation of the ten thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars needed from the general fund. That's my story.
Well, gentlemen, any comments? So a motion approved, second, any other discussion before we move on to the town? All right, uh all those in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's five zero. Now we're gonna move down to staff communications, it looks like.
Council.
Council, there we go, yeah, council communications, let's start with Councilman Gallagher.
I think we uh said it enough tonight, thank you.
Thank you, all right. How about you, uh Councilman, comment?
My, uh my kids are gonna be sad, those uh payers, they make good bike jumps. Not good for walking and I, I have kind of a complaint, it's kind of a police department thing, there's a cop parked out over there by Ace, I keep hitting to him, he's not waiting. Scared the heck out of me every time I'm flying down the road and, and uh anyways, that's all I got, I think it's a fun meeting.
All right, council votes.
Uh no, nothing, Arvin, uh thank you, congratulations, Anne. It's one of those things where you know, you gotta. Hey, it was an issue and you brought it up and you said, what can we do about this? And staff did a, I found a great job, I thought, I thought we know we're near that inexpensive. I know the contractor is helping everybody else too. So yeah, thank you.
All right, Councilman.
Excuse me, Vice Mayor, what about a chair or?
Just speak.
Jeff Ward.
Congratulations, Sam, that's a great job. And, uh, I echo everything that Robert said. I think that's, uh, a project that's long overdue. You know, we tried to band-aid that area for a long time, it's time to get it fixed and fixed right, so. And, uh, Sean, thank you for the, uh, comments during the, the joint session and that that's helpful, I, I agree. We do that more often. And, uh, you know, it's, it's just good to kind of. Get more comfortable with planning commission and the council and. Give us a chance to communicate openly about the issues that might be coming up, so. Thank you for that, thanks for putting that together, Tammy. And that's all I got, thanks, everybody.
You're welcome. All right, first of all, I'd like to apologize for being late, it just timed out away from me, I went to the doctor today, I got a bunch of shots and I feel like ouch. I got shots in both arms and I, it just put me asleep almost. Somebody called me and was like, really? So what do you want, man, we got another hour?
No, I know, it's okay, sorry.
Anyway, Ann, what you've accomplished is incredible, because in Southern California, where I have a home in Venice Beach, the sidewalks. Look like jumps for his son's skateboard. And the city of LA will not repair them. And their argument is, it's cheaper to pay the lawsuits than the repair oil.
Oh, my goodness.
That's insane, but that's, that's surreal. So congratulations. The bathroom, how are we dealing with that, uh, thing with the park and the new bathroom, where'd that leave off at?
So, um, I have found out that Mantica and Tracy both use public restrooms. Um, the problem is, is that none of their public restrooms are open. That we can just go visit. Mantica has two, well, it's a snack bar and a bathroom that are being installed right now. So the park's not finished, so those bathrooms aren't even open. Tracy says they have probably four or five locations that they utilize public restrooms, um, and love them.
Can we see, can we go look at those?
I'd have to schedule the appointment.
Okay.
Because they are close to the public, but they, they were willing to schedule an appointment for tours, so, yeah.
Good enough. Um, let's see, updates, tweets.
Oh, and I think one other question was like, the life of them?
Yes.
Fifty years.
Fifty years.
Yes.
That's better than most of them. Okay, so, uh, the other thing is on updates. So I know we mentioned getting updates once a month, I like to see updates at every council meeting. So we keep what's going on, I mean, it's like the bathrooms and everything else. If you guys can just keep us in the loop like every two weeks, give us a little shootout of what's going on and where we're at. It'd be nice, because otherwise I'm calling and asking, it'd just be easier to have it at the meetings. So everybody knows what we're doing, for example, how we're moving along with our senior housing. How we're doing with different projects in the community, anything that's, uh, been out there that hasn't been resolved, how we're doing with, just to keep an update on stuff. And like our little friendly builder down in the middle of town here, I'd like to know how that's going every week, not that it's not gonna change much, but still like to know. Um, the last thing, the chicken thing. What frustrates me about this situation with the chicken thing is that people come in here with attitudes like you've already made your decision. What they have to understand is we have to respect everyone's right, not just theirs, but the other side of the fence. We have to talk about both groups of these people. And they, they can't come in and bully us, they have to understand it's only fair to go through the process. And that their indication to them is we're biased, that's gonna be there, I can't change that. But accusations about the mayor's change, so now we got a problem, that's weak. That is so weak, it's, it's sad, it's like a child. And then we do the best we can with what we got to work with. And we always try to give everybody on both sides of that fence an opportunity to present their case, so it's clear. I don't want any hanging situations in the community where people didn't think they had a fair shot. It's important that they feel they have that fair shot. Now, in this situation, nothing really got resolved, they're probably going to court for it, which is stupid, but it can end up in court and who knows what's gonna happen. Um, but that, it just kind of frustrates you. Uh, I, I've read in all the, on the resident page, banning chickens, banning chickens. Who said we're banning chickens? I mean, that's crazy. I get so sick of that. Can't anybody get accurate information? It's insane. So anyway, if anybody else has got a problem, so I wish they'd take the time to do their homework. And find out what they're talking about before they come down here and do their little war dance. I'm not one to deal as well with that stuff. I'm sorry, I just don't, I think it's wrong. And that's all I got to say, and thank you everybody for putting up our meeting tonight, good evening. Well. They were shit shots and I got tired of them.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.